I did look up to Karen.
I think that's contaminated.
Yes.
Stairs. Is that Beachfront Joe? I didn't get an answer. She wouldn't tell me. There's a situation for that.
That's concerning.
How do we do the billings? That the attorney's gonna talk about. If not, we ask.
About the stairs?
Yes, the stairs. I don't know, what said stairs, something about stairs at the application?
Well, they provided a staircase so the ERS.
Right, right. But and we would have said it would approve, whatever it was, and we would say it would approve. I only thought that about like four o'clock.
Because that's going to happen.
Yeah, okay. So, hey, I don't know what it's about. I couldn't get, I called Karen today and she said, you know what, I'm not the billings spec, I may get it wrong, so I'm not gonna tell you. And we would have had a whole conversation with John, it should be attorney. He's gonna be. He's gonna have a statement. And.
So good, too.
Um.
You never have to wait, not because.
There's a term you can go on.
Needs a, you're wonderful there.
It was.
Those we want.
I saw John.
He's the one who did the. Oh, he did the easement, yeah. So, over college, did this year.
That was Paul Franco.
He might be my.
I'm sure Frank Cole was.
So, he's 103, I'm 65.
Yeah.
Because I went to first, I went to school, well, CBA with Franco. And I don't know, they're me or not, they all come from.
I didn't say the course, you know, shall we?
Yeah.
Angelic.
What's that, for the South?
Uh, we're just talking to me.
I didn't say the course, you know, shall we?
Yeah.
Angelic.
What's that, for the South?
Uh, we're just talking to me.
That came.
Over the night, but I don't know.
That's a state to the.
I wasn't talking to her, she gave me the. I don't care if it's her. But I remember his first name. Paul Franco. Sixteen?
Oh, so he's. So, he's.
We didn't know his other life. 14, 13, Fontana.
His name's Jeff Fontana.
Fontana?
Yeah.
He's seen it. No, she's in sugar. When there's maple mastic, it wraps through there.
This, this, I guess.
Here he is.
This is on the.
Don't we have more?
This is probably.
No, I'm not for the. They're more than market.
Usually at the time they have.
She's got, we got her. Yeah, probably not that the clothes.
Was washed.
Oh.
Every year, I tell you now.
I work there on Thursday and Sunday at 12:00. I'm working one of the games.
Did you say, so you're talking?
I did that the last time. But it is so busy, so. Come on, they just did that, not that thing where you just yell at people going by. Well, I had a hole. It was a lot of fun.
So, what, sort of big talks I've had?
They said, oh, very good. Don't talk to.
I think we, I don't know what my guy wanted to talk about. I didn't, I didn't.
That's what we lost Friday, is the vote. The name of it. Is it still there or there?
It's still, it's still there.
Yeah. I should thank you. You're doing it. It's all good.
I, uh, it's a good.
You guys got back with the team, I was like, no? You know, that whole party, it's easy to change.
That was a problem.
It was about, it was about, I don't know.
Now, I, I think it's such a word that I have. Uh.
We live out there, I mean, Scott, I was like.
Yeah, so, um, Mark Zeeber said that they, he's, he's got, he should go out, so.
We were on, we were on Marty, and then. We tried Marty for most.
I would push that case.
Where it was a little, I don't know.
What would he use large stuff?
I think that you can carry it.
I don't know.
They're late, I don't like late.
Okay, what do you?
They don't, I have a T, T. Maybe that's why.
Well, you got your one.
I don't know. Jennifer, I want to go on.
They're here, is the woman upstairs, who's about to sign off, whether, which is interesting. Tell them, just more wrestling on. I don't love the rest of that words.
I'm just trying to. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just flickering my ass. It looks like my husband's house, he got me angry. Anything I want, I want, you know, I watch those.
Oh, yeah, there's more of a check show, because they were there for, uh, your TV. Uh, which is a whole.
Doesn't.
Yeah, it's common, they have, uh, they have cracks and, and stuff.
Right.
Uh. But, uh.
I just.
So, they're not there, you know, because.
It never did. If you go down, we've never called it correct. It's like when you're on vacation, you're in close.
What was that, with those?
That's all.
This way, that's a little, a little.
Do you remember that commercial I just gave you? When you're on, it's one of the two, so I can't, this guy, I can't even.
That was a little driver, so.
I can just, that's what it's supposed to be. This is what happened on low. We see, um, took, um.
That's all.
A boy from on. Why?
But then we also saw on the far right, which is.
It happened one more. And then. Different, we're, we're.
It's having to be reading of the number of reports, or she can't do the hints, right?
We get a note from the. Where we have more.
Just seeing as far.
The bridge is on the gas, and then.
Yeah, 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 when you go out there. We get a note from the.
So, do we? So, you sat in with the cushion?
Uh, it's just little benches on the side.
Oh, I see.
And then, uh.
It looks like an efficient screen.
Yeah, yeah, the sound recorder is sworn, so they catch sound there.
Yeah, exactly.
So, it's not bad.
Not a load time.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, this is.
It's another group time. They're coming up to.
We have the meeting here, doesn't start. So, I'm not really worried. Oh. Are you sorry?
Yeah, yeah, I'm the one that are. They have their, that's like.
Yeah.
If you want to follow, follow.
I'm sorry.
Listen, you might need these ones.
Yeah, I might need these ones.
Yeah, we had a time, I think, I think.
You do it every single time, it's hard.
This is trouble, this is at the.
You don't try to be so nice to everybody, I'm not there.
I've heard.
Guinness Factory. So, they were out there playing. My, my dinner, uh, Guinness Factory. Yeah, and then dinner at the Guinness Factory. And, uh. Well.
Well, okay, this is.
Yeah, I, yeah, so.
Yeah. I've been done for that.
There's every word there, that word now, and then.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and we all stand and join in this pledge of allegiance to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, ladies and gentlemen. Ready? The borough Seabright, in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, provided adequate notice at the time, date, and location of the meeting to the Asbury Park Press, Link News, on January 13, 2022. Filed notice with the public clerk, uh, the borough clerk, and posted notice on the borough office and on the borough website. This meeting is open to the public. We have a roll call?
Councilman Bieber.
Here.
Ms. Bills. Mr. Cashmore.
Here.
Chairman Cunningham. Vice Chairman Lusail.
Here.
Ms. Warman.
Here.
Mayor Kelly. Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Lexstein.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Julian.
Here.
And Mr. Chair, I believe, I did talk to Ms. Bills, and I believe she will be here, I think, that's good.
Yay.
So.
At this meeting?
Not this meeting, and then he's coming back, uh, um, sometime.
We have, how many people we have tonight? We. Six, we have six now. Is that my count incorrect?
Yeah, six.
Okay. All right, uh, first on the agenda is the approval of the regular meeting, uh, minutes. Do you have a motion or, or comment or?
I'll make a motion to this guy.
Second.
We need a roll call for that? Roll call, please.
Councilman Bieber?
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore.
Yeah.
Mr. Lusail.
Yeah.
Ms. Warman. Mr. Lexstein.
Yeah.
And Mr. Julian.
Yes.
And also, we need to approve the executive session minutes of, uh, the 26.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Roll call.
Councilman Bieber.
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Lusail.
Yes.
Ms. Warman.
Yes.
Mr. Lexstein.
Yes.
And Mr. Julian.
Yes.
All right, the first item of business is the memorialization of resolution application number 2022-04. Uh, Ruth, uh, Fiocco, understand with some corrections on that?
Yeah, just one correction, um, Mr. Vice Chair, um, in the granting of the varnishing section, there is, uh, the words "to be owned by," it should be, to be dedicated to the borough. With regard to the dedication of the sidewalks, it's an easement, it's not an ownership, exactly. I just want to change those two words, from owned by to dedicated to.
I'll make a motion to a review by the members. Second.
Number roll call.
Councilman Bieber.
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Lusail.
Yes.
Ms. Warman.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Lexstein.
Yes.
And Mr. Julian.
Yes.
Okay, um, now, next on the agenda is the carried application for Beachfront Joe LLC.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the board, Madam May. Paul Frontacola, behalf of the applicant. So, uh, let me just say, I know other council was here back in March, and since that time, we've submitted revised plans back on May 13. We've had extensive discussions, including tonight, uh, with the adjacent property owner. We believe we've, uh, worked out a mutual, uh, agreement to address the concerns of the property owner based on several conditions, and that was the revised plans that were submitted on May 13. Uh, based on the March meeting, there were issues concerning, uh, titles, specifically the easement to the rear of the property. We retained U McGuire, an attorney, to address the title issue. He's issued, uh, an initial letter report, and then your council asked for supplemental submission, which was, uh, provided as well. Mr. McGuire is gonna be here tonight, I'm sure if you want a testimony counsel, or if the lenders were sufficient, but.
I was, I was satisfied with the signs, but you want to be testified, that's up to you, because we're not the one that's.
Okay, it's really.
You look pretty cut and dry right now.
I don't think.
Yeah. The easement does exist, it's there, I've checked the title myself, so, there's no.
Okay.
Any of these, uh, mutual agreements you've made, is that something we have to put on the record, or?
Johnny Anderson, uh, counsel for the objector, which is Mary Ann and Kristen LLC, President H. Tochi, uh, Mary Ann, Beragina, and Christina Wilson. Uh, that LLC owns the Baines Harbor building, it's 1092 Ocean Avenue, block 15, block 1, made adjacent to the property. Uh, we, uh, as Mr. Frontacola said, we have had some extensive discussions, um, collegial at times, hostile at times, but, uh, we're happy to say that we, we've come to a, a resolution that would allow us to withdraw, um, our objection contingent upon some conditions of approval. If the board is so inclined to approve the plans, um, and they are as follows, I'll certainly invite Mr. Frontacola to amplify them or correct me. Um, number one, the plans now depict, and must continue to depict, and the construction will be done in such a way that there won't be party walls. So, they'll create their own wall, which can be a zero-lot line wall, uh, with a certain exception on how they have out. Uh, number two is a small one, they're gonna relocate our roof leader to the, uh, north, uh, let's call it northwesterly side of the, um, new building. Um, so it gets it out a little bit further, closer to River Avenue, away from our courtyard, hopefully preventing any kind of water accumulation. And number three, they had some doors that swung out into, um, our property, uh, the easement area, the scrub, they're making in swing doors, um, where, uh, possible. I think it's only a garbage store. Um, some of these are a little bit bigger and, and more meaningful. Um, the real concerns have been our second floor windows, uh, we're facing, they're right on the property line, we have two of them. We've agreed that the applicant may seal up, uh, at their cost, their sole costing expense, the window on the second floor that's nearest Ocean Avenue. Uh, we will handle any interior work, geopro painting, whatever, they'll handle block wall, uh, on the exterior at their cost. Um, this is the big one, uh, and it's kind of a multi-part. We, um, we really have a strong concern about the, uh, rear window on the second floor. It's a bedroom window, and we are subject to, um, the DCA's jurisdiction as a multifamily building. It's a one-bedroom apartment, and it's required to have light and air, as well as an ingress egress, uh, window, uh, for purposes of code. So, what we've agreed there is that the applicant is going to kind of, in a sense, notch out the building, uh, create about 44 inches or so of space. Uh, and they're gonna install a covered, uh, outdoor stairwell. It's going to, basically have a landing that is in the vicinity of our window, uh, they may have a door of their own on the other side. So, they can use it day in, day out, to get in and out of their second floor. We would be able to use it pursuant to a perpetual easement, uh, which I'll go into more detail on, uh, for purposes of emergency ingress and egress. Uh, we just ask that they secure it, uh, against unlawful intruders, so nobody breaks into the apartment, while still allowing unobstructed access for first responders and somebody getting out of the unit. We'll leave the, the details on that to the architects to come up with something in the past.
So, that staircase is different than what's shown on the plan?
Uh, I believe it's shown on.
No, it's not.
Well, that is what we saw in the.
Um, but, uh, in association with that stairwell, we do need a recorded perpetual access, uh, easement. It's going to obligate the applicant to construct the stairwell, to maintain the stairwell at their cost. Uh, it obligates them that the canopy will be high enough above the stairs to allow light and air in, so that we can fulfill that requirement of the window. Um, and, uh, let's see, they'll, they'll secure it, as we mentioned. Um, there was some talk about whether it would be strictly speaking perpetual, or whether it would be terminable at some point in time. In order to make it strictly speaking perpetual, what we've agreed to do is we'll make it a cross easement. Uh, there's a 10-foot alleyway that we were just discussing in the rear, they already have an easement to be able to pull in and out trucks, so long as they don't block it. And what we would do would be to, um, modify that easement slightly to allow for pedestrian foot traffic for people entering and exiting the stairwell that we're talking about. So, if they had somebody that wanted to access their second floor, they could walk from River Avenue along that easement, um, you know, across our property and up those stairs, uh, or, you know, contrariwise, they could walk out the building and across that easement. Um, one thing that we may not have mentioned, but I don't anticipate will be problematic, is because there'll now be trucks and people, we would just ask that the, um, the owner provide, have a proof of insurance and indemnify us in case one other people are to come in contact with a motor vehicle.
Can I stop you?
Yeah.
Maybe I missed something. That staircase that you're installing is just an egress window, isn't it? Were you installing a door there?
There's. So, it's, the plans don't depict a door to, into our interior.
Into. Into, yes, into yours, but.
Right. We don't intend to have a door from our, our apartment, it would remain a window, but one that you could get out in the event of emergency out to the stairwell.
So, the door you're referring to is actually in the Beachfront Joe's.
Yeah, I believe they may or may not want, he mentioned it, it's not currently depicted on the plans, so.
The stair, that staircase that you're talking about is on these plans?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of them, most recently.
I'm gonna do that today.
It should be dated, I think, the change in. So, what you want, if you're gonna look at for a period. Over here. Right here?
No, because.
Thank you, David, it's a guy.
Maybe we should put up.
And their architect will walk you through it, but if you console A100.
Yeah. We're visioning something, this is this, about 20,000.
Yeah, this is the egress window here, and then it's like a door here.
So, this is the stairwell.
Oh, I see.
We're looking at the paper, he doesn't show me this cover.
Exactly, that's not it.
I mean. Okay, there's a situation. I mean, I'll tell you, the paper, the. I mean, it feels like it's dark, and this is the biggest issue, I'll ask you also, was parking? And the fact that you guys do not have parking. Now, you have an easement that says you can't have parking in the back. So, have you discussed possibly, uh, amend that easement, so that you don't have truck traffic in the back, but that you can have parking in the back?
So, I think the problem with the parking is that we rely on that, um, it's not an easement to us, it's land that we own, and it's how we get our cash in and out of the multi-tenant apartment building. It's an emergency, it means living, that's egress, it's a courtyard there with a number of fire escapes, all the residents, emergency, that to exit those fire escapes and utilize that, uh, right of way. So, from a practical perspective, what we wouldn't want to do is to create a safety concern by allowing permanent parking by them in easement. And since, uh, they might have the hardship argument if.
Well, it's self-created hardship.
I mean, it's.
They bought, they bought the property knowing that they couldn't have parking, and they had no parking capabilities on site.
Right, but it's easy for Mr. Frontacola to argue, but.
Well. And it's not, it's not, it's your, your issue.
They can do this, great. They bought the property, it's a brand-new building.
Exactly.
It's not like this is a building that's staying, it's a brand-new building, you're creating the issue yourself.
But there is an existing building, this property has been used.
Which is gonna be demolished and reconstructed once more.
And then you're asking for a lot.
Yes.
Here, I mean, you could come in with a very small building.
Yes.
For a nice little retail shop that is one-story, does not have any of the parking need that you need for this use. And you would eliminate your parking problem to, to a great extent. Instead of coming in with a pickup restaurant with a pan of space, uh, with tables, and tables on a balcony, I mean, you're creating all these problems yourself because of what you're asking for. And you're doing nothing familiar in your parking situation, because you happen to have something that says that you don't, you can't have parking in the back. I mean, that doesn't wash with me. If this is a self-created hardship, I've never seen a self-created hardship. You're creating your own problem.
Not to mention what they're proposing on the second floor, which is like a gigantic office.
Exactly, it doesn't make any sense.
With a balcony and a macabre, which is the entirety of the footprint, which is ridiculous.
I mean, really be clear, that's what we're asking for, and I don't have to lose, but not to the expense of the town, we have no parking in this town. There's just no parking space, and we can't have applicants just keep coming in here and saying, well, there's a parking lot next door. No, there isn't. Because there's no parking. I mean, that, eventually, someone's gonna go onto that Hatter property, and that's gonna, that's gonna be there, might very well be the Hatter, I don't know. And there's gonna be, and they're gonna need parking, and there literally is no parking. The, the business that he is, that he is proposing to operate in, there's gonna be no room for his employees or him to park to go to that business. There, there's one thing.
But Mark, I, 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 I understand where you're coming from on this issue, that we'd like to create parking if possible, but we also have to recognize that probably 80% of all the businesses we have downtown don't provide zero parking.
I understand that, David, they're all pre-existing structures.
Yeah.
This is a brand-new building.
Many, many of which we've approved here, Mark, who may have had a, was approved for, we haven't had one attached to this, with zero parking.
They would also have hit with Hatter. If it's.
I don't know. Guess what? It shouldn't, much shouldn't be penalized because the Hatters will use that.
That, my.
They have a little building here with two people.
Steve, well, I mean, uh, Mr. Chairman, why don't we have the applicant explain the size of that easement area in the back, right now? So, we know how big it is and whether or not parking.
It's not allowed to park it.
No, I know, but just, but just explain the size, we can theorize how many spaces could fit there.
With the board's indulgence, I may be able to have, send myself, I got, I'll put on one more condition, if you were so inclined to approve it, we'd like to, to have, and then I'll, I'll sit down and you can work with Mr. Frontacola. The only other thing that we're saying is, um, the applicant will not be bound to do this, but if we mutually agree on some modest changes to that stairwell in order to obtain, uh, approval or endorsement from Seabright's Fire Code, Seabright's Construction, or DCA. The only thing we'd be asking in fairness, if it didn't change the building proper, that, you know, the applicant would be allowed to cooperate with us to achieve that, but I haven't come back.
So, let me ask you a question, while you're up. If the applicant doesn't build the second floor, it's just a one-story building, the way it is now, do you need any of this?
Uh.
But I understand you just made an agreement with them, and that's if the application gets confused, uh, gets approved. Now, I'm asking you, i- i- if the second, if the second-story windows are no longer being parked because it's a one-story building, the way it is today, do you need any of those things?
I don't have a definitive answer for you, all I will say is that right now, we're allowed to have a one-bedroom, nobody's told us we can't have a one-bedroom, and that's the way the site functions now. I don't know that that's any assurance that we can continue it, you know, with it.
That's not what I'm asking, you know, the only reason we're attacking the application is you were concerned about the safety of the windows coming in, and now, and now, there's a higher settlement, you're gonna take the bottom half.
Uh, that's correct.
Why, how does the window become a staircase?
I, I don't understand that.
I don't understand.
Window itself does not become a staircase, somebody would exit through the window to a staircase that's adjacent.
Well, what's there now?
Uh, you would go out onto a rooftop.
Right, so.
Well, look, there is a, there is a fire escape there now. Not.
It's maybe not, yeah, maybe not. The rear.
It's certainly above, the window's above.
Is there anything out of the door now?
Yeah.
No, not at all. It's just, it's just over the top.
Just a consideration between the two of you, even though there's nothing there existing now.
It's a consideration because the one-story building's proposed to go to two, so it would enable us continued light, air, and an emergency egress, which we're required to have as a multifamily under the DCA's regulations. So, what it does is.
Do you have that anyways now? Like, you're required to have it now, how do you have it now?
We have a window.
Yeah.
If you crawl down, you'd be on the roof.
You'd be on roof of their building.
So, we have this property, like, you're not providing egress, they're providing egress for.
They're providing egress for us in consideration.
Not informing the egress.
Yes, exactly.
Right, but they have to go onto their building, so.
I didn't hear what you said, I didn't hear what you said.
I said non-informing egress, because it's, they're coming out on their roof. Not their, their.
So, technically, even if they pulled back 44 inches, they could still build up the second floor, if it was granted, and you'd still be in the same position you are now, except you're one-bedroom, and now have, like, you're open space, allegedly.
Yeah, which would mean, as I understand it, that it would no longer be a one-bedroom, because DCA would deprive us of the use of that union. So, what we're trying to do is to maintain the exact number of units on all three.
Do you have anything in writing from DCA saying that it would be disapproved?
I have a witness here that we could put on to substantiate it, but I'd rather let Mr. Frontacola put on his case.
Does he work for DCA?
I was.
Does he work for DCA?
Uh, no, but he has the IBC code section with him that they use to regulate building cyclones.
Okay.
Are you okay if I upset myself temporarily, you can.
Sure. Well, at this point, I don't know if I should, should we open it to the public, if there's any questions of this testimony?
Some.
I don't.
Yeah, no question. Just a stage, potential conditions for a resolution.
Okay, Mr. Frontacola.
Okay, so I think the question, well, I'm sorry again, it was, I think, the size of the easement, I forget, the chairman or Mr. Frontacola.
I had to ask for that, what's the size? I mean, my, my idea, my strength thought is that, explains the size of the easement, how many cars would be parking there? If, now, the other party would have to give them permission to do that, right now, it's not allowed.
I understand.
So, it would have to be a further negotiation outside of this court.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Is this Mr. McGuire?
Yes, this is Mr. Frontacola. Nice guess, thank you, Chuck.
That's, the only way to get to that parking, that would be from the easement.
The only way to get to that parking that would be the back would be through the easement.
Right.
After River Street.
But if it's narrow enough, it would have to be piggyback parking, wouldn't it be okay?
Yeah, well.
You can lose space, I mean, and my, my feeling is you have one space, it's better than no space.
I understand, I agree with you.
And I'm very worried, as I said, we have our park, we have no parking, as everybody knows, we have an employee parking lot down in Riverside, which is going to be going away. We have the Moll parent parking lot, which is going to be going away at some point. You know, we're very lucky to have those right now. Where are all these people parking? They have a parking count of fuss sticks for this use.
Where are all these people parking? We can't discourage development either, though.
I mean, I agree with you David, but they don't have to do this development, just because they're approved to be a restaurant and all that, you know, we can ask, yeah, I mean, Jen, just because they're approved to be a restaurant, there are other uses that are approved in this zone rather than not.
Yes, sir.
And so they give you a lesser intense use and not have this parking.
What's here, the rest of the.
Or, or, yeah, or something.
I think the wood doesn't need to be sworn in.
Can you explain the easement?
Sorry, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth for purposes of this application?
I.
Thank you, can you please state your name and your credentials for the record?
Yes, my name is Hubert Maguire, I'm at the 611 North Road, Middletown, New Jersey. I'm an attorney at law in the state of New Jersey. I have been an attorney for 30 some odd years.
I'll move that to the next.
Yeah, I didn't think we had to.
If needed, that's fine.
Well, testifying as an expert in place.
Okay. It's on.
That's okay, that's fine, I'm just going through the repeat.
Well, let's just, real quickly, your practice primarily involves real estate and review of title reports.
That's correct, I've been in practice since I was a state for over 30 years, I'm a special counsel with County of Hudson, I handle title issues and land issues for them for things such as our report, outstream vacating, road vacating, survey reads, things like that.
So we're offering you some regard as an expert in title. Mr. Maguire, were you asked to review the title for the subject property specifically the, for the easement to the property?
Yes, I was.
Can you outline for the board your findings, it's a question from the engineer, I believe this is the size of the.
Well, the deed into the property and going back to when this easement was created was a deed which was reflected in my letter that I provided to Mr. Fernikola, I believe, to the board attorney, the deed which we were calling the Nero deed, and I'll give you the date of that deed, so it's on the record, that was on October 31st, two, sorry, October 31st, 1962. And then the came from the owner of the property, which right now would be lot one, the predecessor entitled, and it was for a portion of that tract of property, which is the current subject lot two, as well as that area behind lot two, which essentially measures 10 feet wide, it's a little larger, it's 15 foot wide directly behind the building, and then it goes into a 10-foot wide strip from the property of the, I was called, the corner point of lot one to River. So technically, the easement would be 10 foot by 70 feet with a small, and it's not listed on the map, but probably about a five or seven foot strip, which is 15 feet wide.
This easement is to serve which property or all of them? Specifically for the use of lot two?
Correct, yes, and if you go back prior to title, what had happened is, at one time, lot two was actually 30 feet wide, it was two lots. And lot two, there was another lot, which was lot four, was 20 feet wide, and that was behind both lots two and lot three. That 20-foot lot, which was lot four, was split into two lots and added to lot two. And at the same time, lot two was then split half, making two L-shaped lots, which were labeled by the municipality in one of the tax maps, I believe it was in 1950's tax map, was lot two A and two B. Two A became part of lot three, that was deeded to the owners of lot three. So that whole parcel, including the L shape of lot two and lot four, became part of lot three. Lot two maintained its L-shaped configuration and that was then in this 1962 deed, a part of that lot, just the existing subject property today, was deeded to Mr. Nero, who was Mr. Botanis predecessor entitled, and the rear portion, the remaining portion of lot two became the easement. And that's what the easement is.
The only reason I'm asking is if we were to, if we can legally make a, make that allowable for parking, it wouldn't interfere with anybody else and it's strictly for the use of lot two.
So was there, didn't the easement?
Oh, no, you testified about garbage, right?
Okay, let me finish with the, with Mr. Maguire. Based on your review of the title, is there any limitation in the deed creating the easement to allow the parking of trucks or other vehicles in the easement area?
Yes, there is. Directly in that same deed, which I just mentioned from 1962, that deed reserved back to the owner of, was now lot one, the use of that easement as well as the use of lot two, and lot two's use was restricted only to ingress and egress, unloading of a truck if necessary, but no parking specifically stated in the law.
So let me just read this, this is the language in question. Together, which is in caps, with a right of ingress and egress over the 10-foot right of way in common with others from River Street to the rear of the property herein, to be conveyed in the grantee shall have the right to load and unload a truck with reasonable dispatch, but in no event shall the grantee have the right to park a vehicle on the said premises. Is that the language?
That's exactly the language, it's correct.
So it's explicit that parking is not permitted, the grantee would be the person or the land benefiting from the easement?
That's correct.
What about access into a garage on the search?
Uh, as far as access to garage, it's not mentioned in the easement, it wasn't covered, I mean, at that time, probably in 1962, that wasn't taught. Question I think is the physical configuration, I can obviously testify to that, but the physical configuration, it's only 10 foot wide, I'm not sure how you could swing a vehicle. And it also, I don't know how that would interfere with the operations on the, on the hardware store section, because that, just from viewing the site, that is where they have garbage and fire escapes come into that area. I couldn't answer that part.
And just for the record, the easement itself is actually perpendicular to the lot number two.
That's correct, it wouldn't be able to turn out of it.
That's why I pointed out in this court that it is perpendicular, because it would require return as opposed to the.
Mr. Hall, do you agree that there's no way to make that progress?
With a car?
With a car.
And stay within the.
In that area, the easement would be 15 feet by the width of the lot, it's 15 feet. And.
10 by 15.
Well, it's 10 by 15.
You've got to turn the 10.
It turns to 10 from River Street behind lot three, when it gets to lot two, it becomes wider. Is that what you said?
When it gets after lot three, correct, when you pass lot three.
Correct, when it's at lot two, it's about 15 feet wide, is that correct?
It's about 15 feet.
Yeah, you could probably do it, but it would be difficult and you might have to back out.
A smart car.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's all supposed to be stuff, so it's, it can be done, it's awkward.
It's not practical.
It's, you know, and it would be blocking any ingress for the hardware store property next door.
And how do you back it out? You pulled in, how to back it out?
Well, I'm sure that any garbage truck, if it ever goes in there, it probably does, but.
Well, it does, if it does, it'll probably back us to that amount of lot.
Or back in and front out, yeah. It's not two-way traffic.
I don't, I don't, I know, I know what you're talking to you with the parking, I agree with you, but I don't think it's practical in this area.
Steve, in the same, it's not a problem anyway, because there's a prohibition on the easement, this is, we can't do it. So it's not, so it's not an issue, but what's so an issue is they're creating their own parking issue by the type of business that they are proposing. And they don't need this type of business, they can have a less intense use on this property and not have this parking variance.
But everybody has a right to build something on their lot.
You don't have, you do not, yeah, within reason, and having a six plus or parking variance is not necessarily in reason.
But providing another storefront on motion area for the public, I think is a, is a good course.
And I would agree, and it could be a nice retail shop, it doesn't have to be a pickup restaurant with a second floor, lot one is it?
Why that it isn't permitted use of the zone?
Yeah, but just because something's permitted does not, and Jen and I will ask you as our planner, just because something's permitted, does that mean you won't have to get the highest destination permitted for this property?
No.
Thank you.
So yes, the applicant could put two spaces by removing, let's say, 15 to 18 feet of the building.
But they wouldn't be able to negotiate that.
But it would be very difficult to get into those spaces, they probably would have to either back in or back out, you know, and front end or front out, not be able to do two-way traffic everywhere.
You agree it's not practical?
It's not practical, it's difficult.
Mr. Vice Chairman, one of the other recommendations by the planner is we make sure that they can get delivery access to the back of the building. I understand Mark's concern and I share that concern, but we do want to make sure the delivery is motivated to be in the back of the building and not in front, because we don't have that built in motion area.
No, I, I don't disagree with anything that's coming up at this point, but I also don't think it's fair to, to restrict a new business from opening there where everybody else has the opportunity to enjoy all the advantages that we've given over the years as far as parking and loading, loading. I mean, Angelica Restaurant is the most busy restaurant on the East Coast and they don't have one single parking space, they take their garbage pails out to the front and they, their deliveries are out front. I mean, we allow all our businesses to survive with those, with these hardships and this environment.
Respectfully, if they're the ability to load from the rear, which they have.
Yeah.
We should require.
Okay.
We shouldn't perpetuate a bad situation just because we've done it in the past, if there's an ability to avoid it.
No, I agree with you. And David, it isn't fair to say we've done this in the past, we, Angelica's predated standing. Tommy's, more or less, even though it was a post-standing approval, was right after standing and nobody had any idea the town was gonna blow up the way it has. So compared to any, and same thing with Matt Hatter, which I don't know if anybody on this board actually voted for the Matt Hatter application, because I did vote and you voted no.
I voted no.
You voted no, so using Matt Hatter is like a bad example, so nobody on this board voted for the Matt Hatter application.
Well, the board, the board did approve it.
Right, but it's a general, maybe that word was wrong, maybe that word was wrong, and maybe you were right and Nate was right.
So what I would submit is, is that regardless of what transpired in the past.
Right, it's a no.
Here we are today, in 2022.
But it's clearly not irrelevant. It's clearly not irrelevant.
Did I use the word no? No, I didn't mention the word no, so I respectfully, I'm gonna finish my statement. So at the end of the day, regardless of what happened in the past, it happened in the past, we're here today, we're not gonna just allow issues that have become problematic to just perpetuate itself because we've allowed it in the past. Here we are, they have an easement, we've had testimony very clearly that that easement allows for trucks and deliveries, why would we not require deliveries in the back if they have the means to do so?
I don't think, I don't think we require it in the back, nobody cares about that.
Right, well, that's kind of where we, that's what we'll say.
Well, nobody's gonna, they're already spawned.
Right.
You know, you know, I'll get the, the town, yeah, we got full deliveries, not that delivers in the back.
Agreed.
The conversation was more about parking.
Yeah.
And, and right now, the person that's giving easement will not allow it, at least we don't think so.
There's no more impact, there's delivery.
And if they did allow it, it would be awkward.
And I'm gonna repeat, we're part of all objective, so I do think it's relevant, what this board did in the past, because there's no precedent in zoning, you gotta take every property the way it is and what's going on today. We cannot be bound by mistakes that previous boards have made.
But you also can't put a burden on the property owners, that wasn't put on other property owners, and it is certainly a factor for.
Yeah, but, but, sir.
Senator, can I just finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
It is certainly a factor for the board to consider what prior variances were granted. When you talk about this board, not the individuals who make up, the board is the board on behalf of the borough of Seabright. Whether you were an individual member at the time or not, or voted or not voted, the precedent is established based on what the majority of the board did at that time, and it certainly is relevant, not only is it relevant, it is germane, because it would otherwise represent unequal treatment of the subsequent property owner to say, well, we gave these variances in the past, but we're not gonna give it to someone today. So is it the only factor? No, I'm not suggesting to you it's the only factor, but it is certainly a factor in your deliberations based on your knowledge of prior variances.
Can you remind me when this property was purchased?
2015.
And I'd like to see a case that says there's precedent in zoning, because, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, I'm just, I think, what, understanding here and what you're saying, it's been seven years that absolutely no one has said about this property.
Well, there was, there were prior issues that, that this property was subject to potential acquisition by eminent domain, I was the attorney at the time, we were objected to it, being, you know, that's actually my true area especially is eminent domain, and one of the problems that you have as a property owner, that if you, if you know that your property is being subject to eminent domain, you go ahead and you seek approvals, that there's case law in the Health Division of the state that it can't be considered in the valuation of the property. So it's really the proverbial rock in the hard place, because if you make your application, you hire the head attorney, then to your planner, you come in, you get the approvals, and then the property is subsequently acquired, then the courts, none of that can be considered. So it's, it's tough. And then you have the situation where if you don't do anything for seven years, if you don't have a plane to say, well, I sat around waiting for you to take the property, you never took the property. So as someone who specializes in that area, whether it's Seabright, Jersey City, you know, Atlantic City, that's the dilemma that you're in this hard, you know, this difficult position when your property is subject to a potential acquisition by eminent domain. And the law represents that.
Are you saying you received parts from the borough, saying the borough was going to re-stand the property?
There was a redevelopment plan that gave, that gave the power to acquire it, the redevelopment was trying to, which is the first step, to acquire the property, and we were objecting to that.
My understanding at the time was that, that your client was in agreement with the redeeveler and was jointly involved in that application.
That was unfortunately, you're incorrect, that was.
That's not correct.
Go ahead, finish.
Go ahead.
I didn't say there about it, you're incorrect, because you, there was an original redeeveler and that was true, then you had a different redeeveler, and they were no longer interested in joint venture, they wanted to acquire the property. That's where it changed.
Okay, and I'll.
That's where, that's where you're incorrect.
Mr. Fernikola, I'll tell you, I'm our counsel, you're incorrect.
Okay.
There was never more than one redeeveler for that piece of property, there was only one redeeveler for that property, there was never, that you needed another redeeveler for that piece of property. So I don't know what you're talking about, there was a second redeeveler, you're correct.
Okay, well.
And your client is not in the background and I'm correct, so I don't know.
Well, I can tell you this, because I was involved in it, in their efforts to acquire the property, was the property subject to potential taking by eminent domain based on the designation?
Was it, was it an area, was it a area?
Area need to be developed.
It was area need to be developed, yeah.
And that's, council, you agree, that's what conveys, when you make that declaration, that, that's what grants the municipality the power to acquire the property by eminent domain, correct?
I would agree, but it was subject to eminent domain, it was one redeeveler.
All right, let's get back to the application.
So maybe, does the public have any questions for Mr. Maguire?
This is, this is testimony finished then?
Yes.
Okay. Same file from the land.
Okay, so, there was, there was a question for Mr. Anderson, just to verify who was the owner of the underlying property with the easement, and that is the same owner as the owner of lot one, so it's his property.
Oh, okay.
Okay, just to confirm.[1677.96]
The lot of one is the, okay.
The base.
The base. Okay, any other, anybody have any more questions of this testimony? If not, we'll open it to the public. Is there anybody in the public that has a question on this testimony we just listened to from Mr. Mivard? Okay, if not, we'll close the public portion and we'll move on to the next.
I'll take this one. As our next witness, Mr. Chairman, we're going to call Agenda Bigcoff, it's the Agenda A L L E N D.
Oh, spelling error.
I'm trying to pronounce it correctly. But why don't you come in, I don't know if you testified last time.
Okay, sure. Okay, so can you under open?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Did you prepare a revised plan since you last appeared before this board on March eighth, two thousand twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay, do you have a copy of the plan that's been provided to the board?
Yes.
On the sheet? Just what it is for the record, if you had to modify what sheets?
Yes. Is it T? T zero zero one is the first sheet, um, there's a A one hundred, second sheet, A one oh one, third sheet, and A one oh two.
And they were all submitted with the, to the board, correct?
Correct, yes.
So if you're going to utilize them and mark them, that's fine, otherwise we consider them part of the package and we'll note that in the resolution.
Okay, we could, they were.
If you're going to write down a tenant, then we'll mark it as an exhibit, if not, it's considered part of the.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Would you describe the changes ever made to your plans since you last appeared in March?
Sure, so we've made a few changes, beginning with the title. Before the project was going to be an addition and alteration. Now the entire building is being demolished and a new building put out. We have also included the analysis of the required parking that was in part of the zoning data prior. We could not find a zoning requirement for a takeout sandwich shop, so we used the closest use similar to what we're doing, which was a restaurant. And the difference is that we require six parking spaces and we are providing non, there was a non-existent before, as you already know, however, as far as parking. You need wood and steps. Based on the restaurant and the number of employees, based on my analysis, two employees, and based on the number of occupants, no more than twelve at one point, the number I can look at is six parking spaces. So what?
Well, I think, I hope this being in your review letter, you noted that it was six spaces where we initially said five and changed it to six.
Correct.
But the board engineer increased with that.
Jen, is that, is that six with the office and the restaurant? Do you have any suggestions?
Yes.
Okay. Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The, it's a takeout restaurant, does that mean there's no consumption or premises? It is, yeah, it's a takeout restaurant. There are some chairs, we're showing you, you know, you can have a coffee or you can have juice, people can sit down while they're waiting, but it's a takeout. So how is it a takeout restaurant if they're sitting out?
No, there's seats and people can sit down and not sit out.
We can take the seats out, that, it's, you know, if you're comfortable with that, that's not a problem. We'll take all the seats out and it will be strictly a takeout, you can wait standing up, like a Dunkin' Donuts or something like that, yeah. Should people need a counter? No, we won't have that. We will remove that if that's a condition that you prefer, that's not a problem. It's a takeout, it's a takeout restaurant, which, you know, talking to my client, his intention is to feed the beachgoers and people walking by, it's not meant for Uber Eats or, you know, DoorDash or coming from Red Bank or Atlantic City is to, to basically service the local community, more of a seasonal thing focused on, I'm sorry. In the summer and, you know, whatever pedestrians you have in the winter, but it is a takeout shop, that's the intent. All right, so you have rid the seats in the front, you have rid the counter area. Why do you have all this room?
Well, I think it's need all this room.
Why do you have all this room?
Yep.
I mean, you could, this entire front of this restaurant, takeout, is being, as I look at it, is for the seating on this, in the front, and to allow stations to counter seats. So, so we can make, we can definitely, we haven't defined the, all the equipment that's going to be used for, for the takeout restaurant. We can make a larger counter, work counter, not a sitting out counter or a standing counter, we can make a bigger counter. Definitely we can use a bigger kitchen, and, and that's the reason, you know, we wanted to utilize what we think have the right to, and that is a large enough place where, if you think about it, you have a bunch of people coming out at once, you want to have some, some room to navigate. So I, I don't think you want to have a counter right up against the front entrance of the building, you want to have some relief, so I think this is, this is sensible, it's not, it's not.
There are other businesses in town that have counter seats right up against the street.
Right, that's because they had no choice, but, you know, I think we're just hanging the building, we're doing it right. Okay.
This is only fifteen feet wide, told you. You take away the outside walls and sheetrock and everything, you're ending up with less than sixteen feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. David, I'm calling back, this building is too big.
It's fifteen feet wide, you have a split haze or, or then, yeah.
We barely have any standard.
We only have thirteen feet inside. We, we have structure, we have insulation, we have thirteen feet, so that's from the tip of my finger to the tip of my other finger, that's six feet, so you double this, you double this, you have a sense. And right where Mr. Farnol called it is, that's the width of the building. So when you have a counter, you know, you have a few people, the place is tall. It's a very small space, and we, we really don't have much. That is the hardship that we have.
The width is challenging, but you're, you're like seventy feet deep.
Right.
So the question comes, I'm not saying that the counter has to be up against the street, but like, what are you doing with the balance of the seventy-two feet if people aren't sitting there? If there's a counter, people come in, get their food and leave.
If you, if you come in and make an order, you have to wait for them to prepare.
I, I get that, I'm just saying. And then the entire second floor, seventy-two feet long, is an office, a balcony, and like, it, it just.
It is.
It just seems, it just seems exorbitant on the second floor as well. I mean, an office for a, a takeout restaurant does not need to be seventy-two feet by fifteen feet. That's exorbitant. So like, I, I just feel like, to, to Mr. Lexton's point, what you're showing on the plans is, in my humble opinion, not exactly representative of what you're describing as the operations. If it's a takeout restaurant, I don't understand the two stories, I don't, like, if, if it's just takeout, the office can be on, the first floor can be a one-story building. I, I'm not understanding the necessity for two full floors, seven square, that office is like as big as my downstairs. Like, I'm not understanding why the, and what's the balcony for?
I have, I have, I have a small house, too, yeah, I understand your point, but I disagree.
Okay, that's great.
I'm entirely disagree with your point. Like I, like I said, this is not a place where you just evaporate when you order, you need space to move around. This is only about twelve feet wide. We have a space that adds some relief when you come in, there's some landing on top. We have this balcony that you referred to on the first floor and on the second floor, we have a, a handicap ramp left on the front that takes space, and we need to have room for that to operate properly. So most of the space is not really being used most of the time, but it's needed for handicap accessibility. You can see we have a handicap bathroom, we have the stairs to go up to the second floor, that takes much of the space, and then we have the small kitchen in the back. That takes care of the first floor, this is not by any means, and please understand that this is not by any means a big place. So you're taking up space and you got stairs coming up to the second floor, and you're eliminating stairs for the second floor because you don't want the second floor, you don't need the stairs that the stairs are taking up. Uh, right, 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 if we don't have a second floor, we want a second floor. Next line, we, but, but it's, my client wants to operate this business from the second floor, and that's why you have the office on the front side, it's not seventy-two feet deep. It's thirty-seven deep, including the stairs. And then in the back you have storage. We don't have a basement, we need storage, we need dry storage, we need all kinds of storage, it's a takeout place, so you don't have a, a dishwasher that will take care of utensils and things like that. So we have to have a big enough storage on the second floor to accommodate the restaurant. So by no means, I'm in complete disagreement, because this is a, a big place, it's oversized, I think you're misreading what we're trying to do here.
How many square foot is it on each floor?
It's nine hundred and.
How many square foot of course makes it out on the fourth floor?
Okay, on the, uh, it's the same on both floors and it's nine hundred and thirty-nine square feet.
On each floor?
On each floor, yeah.
That, that's not large by any means.
Not at all. Mine makes a bedroom to a thousand feet.
Yeah, you're a man, bedroom to thousands of square feet, you know.
I don't know. This, this. Well, an office, okay, doesn't necessarily have to be an office just for his takeout business, he may have another office, maybe he's a trade.
That's totally different application. If it's multiple uses on a single property, that's a totally different application.
Well, that's not a multiple use, but the chairman is saying that he has other businesses and he's doing his office work there.
I'm not talking about renting it out, what is, what is.
That's, that's what you said, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean it that way.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean it that way.
Yeah, there was a situation just last week, or maybe, I don't know, the week before, but last week, where there was a large organization, I think it was a hospital, whatever, it's happening, beach party day, it started raining, and everyone woke up from beach because it was raining. They were half jammed in to condos, but they have such a small front areas that they actually, all the people block the sidewalk because there's not enough room inside for them to, to gather or stand while they're ordering pizza. You can't, you know, as you go through the city, you go anywhere, it is not considered a large space, almost any takeout place, anywhere you go, you, you need a gathering space for the people who are ordering their food and then waiting. It's not a square foot place, it's, it's not a.
Obviously, I'm just saying, I'm pretty disagree with you, so.
Well, you don't have, we want to try to get the sidewalk blocked by all. I have many times walked the sidewalk in Seabright, on many, many occasions, I have seen what it's like, it's crazy, I don't know how to. We're not in the business of playing or to provide shelter for the crowd coming off the.
Well, we're not, is that our job to establish shelter?
If somebody wants to come in and order some food and he wants to be out of the elements, what's wrong with that?
Then not even wrong with that, that's our job.
We, we obviously know you're not approved, you don't like this application, so take it easy a little.
We, we're trying to be practical, right? We have, we have six feet from the edge of the counter to the wall, six feet, from the tip of my finger to the tip of my finger, that's all we have. I'm ordering here, I'm looking at the sign, more, we have three feet to go to the bathroom, that's it. This is not, I think, because of the proportions, I'm sorry, let me finish. Before the proportions, the, the proportions of the building, they seem very long and narrow and it seems like a big building, we can walk across, this is a tiny space. We, we, we name this the nugget in, in our office. This is the thing that has, you know, taken forever, it's a tiny space. Parking is impossible, not practical, impossible, I'm going to go right, I'm going to say it's impossible to provide parking. The only way you can provide parking is creating a curb, raising the building above the advisory and the Seabright BFE, raising it to the garage level, put a curb here, go in tandem parking, you can put two, and then come out of, that's insane.
I don't think any.
On your sidewalk, kind of.
It is insane. No one here is suggesting that you should be providing parking on the sites unless you weren't able to make an agreement with the extra labor to relieve yourself in that condition, which then would be possible. So no one's suggesting that you should have parking, what I'm suggesting to you, what I am suggesting, it's not yours, it's not up here, I get that. What I'm suggesting to you is that the reason you have this parking variance is because you want this use and you don't need to have this use. Any use here will require parking inside. It would require six spaces. But if it requires one, is this same, if it requires one or six, is this same variance, we need parking. So if we're from like zero regardless. It's not the same variance.
And like, well, we're not.
Not the same variance. Jen, wait a second, Jen, do you read us the same variance, six, six spaces per.
No, one space is one space, six spaces is six spaces. So I'm saying you still need eight parking variance, you still need the same relief, the extent of the relief is different between six and five.
So that's like saying if you have a hundred spaces, you need one space, it's the same relief. I mean, it's not.
But a carryout restaurant doesn't have people parking or staying there, they come, they pick up their stuff and they leave, or they're walking people, they take their food and eat and walk along.
It's like. You've never driven to a takeout restaurant to pick up food and then leave? Where are you parking? This is a tandem floor that the bathroom is announced on.
Yeah, Suzanne, can we let them continue with their testimony?
Yeah, I agree.
They've had the same fight six times, it's a lot of.
I, I would, I would reiterate that we're trying to accommodate a, a new business for the pedestrian, for the local, you know, patrons. It's not for somebody to come from another town, try to find parking to come, I, I hope we have the best and most successful business, and, and this becomes a very popular place, but the intent is to really feed the beachgoers. It's, it's all right, it's a, you know, I don't think there's a sandwich shop right around here, there's a lot of pizza and a lot of break down places.
I know there's a sandwich shop right around that, that's all times.
Okay, I wasn't aware, but, but we're going to have something better. Good, so. I'm just saying.
Okay, can I just, just give a brief description of the stairwell to the rear that you added, that is added on?
So what we've done, as you can see here on the lower level, and this is the garage, restaurant level and the second floor, is that we've matched out a space that's forty-four inches wide to allow for a metal, non-combustible, fire-rated stair that would allow the neighbor to climb out their window and end up in the landing area, around twenty-four inches below the window sill. So this high, and then we'll be able to get out onto a landing area and then go down the steps into that easement area at the back, in case of an emergency, that bedroom will have that access. We would probably also provide a stair, we haven't done it on this side of the road, but we may, we'll provide a door from the second floor, so we have the same access. And so, you know, we, we've described already what the size of the office is and why we need it, and the size of the storage, and why we need it. We have a kitchen in the rear, obviously to provide for the, for the sandwich shop, and we have handicap bathroom and we have the handicap platform to access because we're raising the building to meet the Seabright BFE, basically of elevation.
Would it, would it be fair to say that you're installing that notchback stairs and accommodation to the neighbor to avoid any objection to the application because it really doesn't affect your application?
That is correct.
Any other alternative that can be utilized? I mean, I, I don't think that that is going to pass muster, that forty-four, because there's no.
Well, if I could help people, I did have a conversation with the building department today, and, and as I understand it, there have been conversations with somebody in this room about the, I don't know, maybe, about, about that stairway and how it will never pass the building department, and I don't even know why. Do you know anything about that? Yeah, I've been, so. I'm familiar with all the conversations today and. But they go. Uh, you have to fix the application, and then you'll become a disaster.
No, we would come back, well, it's, it's been handled primarily by the attorney, by the adjutor, and we've, we've taken, what, what, what we agreed to do was modify the plan to provide the stairway to address the concern with the adjacent property owner bearing the responsibility to have it approved for use of their property, because we don't need to come back, we can have the stairway, we don't have to come back if the adjacent property, the owner is not permitted to use it as emergency access, that doesn't require us to come back.
So there's just no stairway?
No, there would be a stairway, they just wouldn't have legal access to it, we wouldn't take out the stairway, we're going to, we have a plan to.
The what? So you've got no stairway in the north?
Well, no, it's, if, if.
Stairway that can't be used.
Uh, I don't believe that it can't be used, the question is not whether we can use or not use the staircase, the question is whether the staircase would be sufficient to persuade DCA that our single bedroom apartment gets to remain a single bedroom apartment. So they can't tell you you can't use the staircase in an emergency, what they would say is, that's well defined, but it does not allow you to continue to use that apartment as a one-bedroom apartment.
Was there any consideration, I'm just, is there any consideration to just pulling back on the second story and letting go of the notchback and creating a flat roof so that you went from a two-story back to a one-story in the rear so that that bedroom would have access to a flat roof like it does now?
That, that's possible, but it would not release them of, of, of the previous requirement.
I don't, I don't think that would be called the, the, the possible rule.
But they didn't.
Yeah, that's, you know, it's a lot, yeah.
Right. This is a new bill.
It's not, it's not, it's not.
It's a combination.
If this is, if this is, that's one of the reasons why this is a good situation and why it's with Seabright.
All right, can I make a question, Mr. Anderson here? I don't know who he is, but he's bringing his hand.
His name's Mike, and he's an architect, I don't want to hijack Mr. Farnol. He's been into.
I just figured since this company is up in my.
Me, he puts feet.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, simply one last thing, not to necessarily go to the chairman, I'm the one that's going to handle compliance on this, and the resolution's going to be done, let's say it's approved, and then I have to decide whether or not any future changes will be allowed to be able to sign the plans and get the building built.
What is he going to actually?
And honestly, if, if this stairway can't be used for its intended purpose under the resolution, how can I possibly sign the plans and let the building be built?
Is it a use of the staircase or the size of the, what's?
I don't, I don't have the, maybe we're going to find out then. Yeah, no. I think it's a use of the staircase, but I.
Right, so, well, I guess one thing would be easy to address that engineer, I said this earlier just to be clear, but if we then just added a door in this area right here, then it would not be a stair in no way anymore. It would be an access to the second floor.
Of your building?
Of our building. Right, we're happy to make that change.
It would be a second, it would, it could always be a fire escape for your.
Right, yeah, we just get the piggyback off of it.
Right. But as someone on the board said, maybe there's a compromise between that and having less on the second floor to satisfy everybody, what building department and planning board. I don't. But before you finish, we hear the testimony from the adjutor's architect.
No, I don't think there's anything else we'd like to go.
Okay, so I have no further questions for the.
I think we've asked all the questions, we're spending a little more now on questions.
The boards of orders may ask if you're just clarifying questions.
So let me, should we open, you're going to finish your testimony or you're?
Yes, we're finished with.
So I have to open it to the public if there's any questions of the testimony we've just listened to? If not, we'll close the public portion. Who will you like to have next?
No. Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson is going to, as in.
Oh, you are.
Just very briefly, five minutes or less. Good evening, Mr. Matas. Thank you for your, your assistance with the redesign of the plan. Just wanted to confirm the revision date of those plans, if I could. They were submitted on five thirteen.
There's a mail, it says five twenty-four.
All right, so five twenty-four, and those indeed show the staircase that we had to discuss.
Yes.
And if the board were so inclined to move this application for approval, the applicant would condition the approval upon the inclusion of those, that stairwell, which will be maintained at your client's expense, metal stairwell, covered from the elements, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And the plan would be to allow us a perpetual easement that would be reported, allow us emergency ingress, egress to that stairwell, correct?
Yes.
Just want to confirm that those plans show an absence of a party wall and that your client will be willing to condition any approval upon the absence of party walls in the future?
That's correct, yeah. There's no problem.
And we talked about how your client intended to seal up our front window on the second floor and you guys would be willing to do that at your sole costing expense as to the exterior blocking?
Correct. The plan is like to seal it off.
And has the plan been revised to relocate the roof leader to the northwesterly?
Yes, there, there.
And your storage area is now in swing doors, is that right?
That's correct. The door swings into the storage space.
And has between you and Mr. Hoker and our architect and Seabright's construction officials, you'd be willing to design the stairwell in such a way that you could restrict access for nearby wells, people that want unlawfully enter, also allow free access to the fire officials, first responders?
Yes.
How would you do that? A lockbox?
We can have a lockbox and then have a panic hardware like, like you see on that door, it was X, X, and only. So you can have access from the easement, but you can push out in case of, of emergency. And the fire department will have a lockbox in the back.
And if I may, the gutter leader is running out to the north side of the building?
It's on the north side of the building, yes.
Okay, and is there anything running to the front?
No, everything is running to the back.
You think there'll be a problem with erosion from that, in that area? It's not paved.
Um, I, I don't, it's not paved the whole area, but.
This concrete up to a certain point stops.
Yeah.
Directly, I think directly under the building.
If we allowed you to put a splash block on our property, would you be willing to do that to prevent that erosion or hole or pitting there?
Sure, that's not a problem. I mean, we're doing concrete underneath the entire structure as well.
Thank you.
Does that satisfy your, your concern on that specifically? And then the stairwell itself would be designed in such a way that the canopy or cover would be kind of elevated with enough space to allow light and air into that alleyway?
Yes, it would be integral to the stairs. It would not be attached to the new building or the existing adjacent building. It would be part of the stairs.
I have no further questions for this witness and I defer to counsel here as to whether he wants to continue his case in chief as planned or whether he wants to put Mr. Simpson on to speak to this issue involving DCA and the alleyway.
Mr. Anderson, just a question, is this canopy cover an integral part of your condition or is that just, you know, like, let's keep people dry?
I suspect it's keeping people dry and preventing snow accumulation on the stairs.
So that was an issue, there's flexibility because you're really looking just to maintain stairs in order to have them even.
Yeah, I mean, for the most part, it's, I don't know that it's indispensable to my client, it's, it's really intended to please another audience, you know, building, fire or DCA.
Okay, I don't, why don't you go into the public again or we finish with this testimony?
We were finished with this testimony.
I'll open it to public once more if there's any questions to this testimony that we've been listening to. No, we'll close it. Mr. Ferenc, oh, you got next?
I guess there was a request to hear from Mr. Simpson, the adjacent property owner's architect. So I've known, no, okay, then we'll call. We have our engineer, Mark Louver.
No, I didn't.
Oh, you are.
Mr. Anderson, you can rock him or not.
I mean, you can call him as, no, I'm not calling him. I thought you were, oh, I, he had his hand up.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, you know, unless, unless the board wants to hear testimony, it's really Mr. Ferenc calls out.
Right, okay, we'll call our engineer then.
Were you sworn in at the lights here?
No.
Okay, so I was in here. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for purposes of this application?
Yes.
Okay, please state your main credentials for the record.
It's Mark Louver C. in the right language. Lever, L-E-V-E-R, and I'm a heat point engineering in Marburg.
Thank you.
Yep.
He's there. Before me.
I was going to say, I know there's four people who disagree.
We found something, something you agree with there.
You would be on the seat.
If there's no objections, we'll accept your credentials.
I've been there before, thank you.
Yeah, you look familiar.
Okay. I won't tell you which applications in case they want to look at.
Did you serve as engineer on this project?
Yes, I did. I, I want to talk about parking for a second because I looked at this, you know, many different ways to try and figure out how to really put all the options on the table here, assuming we're starting with a vanilla box, which is, assuming this is just a vacant lot with no structure on it, even to say and go as far as to, you know, given the fact that there was never any building on this property, let's just look at this lot that's fifteen by seventy-two. If you were to try to come in through an easement in the back and make that left turn into the property, you might be able to do it in a very small car or motorcycle, but the issue that's unknown is if someone were to develop a corner lot, which is lot three, and they were to build that building to, you know, fill out their property, then that maneuver would not be possible anywhere because in order to back out of a ninety-degree parking stall, you need at least twenty-four or twenty-five feet. So now, part of your twenty-four, twenty-five feet is obstructed by the fact that there's a building next to your car. So it really doesn't seem possible to get out of a spot, you know, if that is property where it had to be developed. Then I looked at coming in from Ocean Avenue. Then again, assuming that the DOT will align and make a curb cut here, which I don't see happening, unless you were to agree to stack parking, you're only getting one spot, but you're going to lose easily or possibly two street spots. Because based upon my, you know, analysis of the layout of the, the street parking there, which is signed for thirty minutes at time, this fifteen-foot property clips possibly one spot in the rear of that spot and then the front of the next spot. So you're probably going to lose two spots if you came in off Ocean Avenue in the driveway. It seems to me that, why would you lose two street spots to create one off-street spot and then you're pushing your building all the way back to the property? The parking space is about eighteen feet or twenty feet, that just doesn't make any sense. So then I went and I looked at all the other applications that are on the street, all the other businesses, and the only ones I could readily identify is having like private off-street parking that they own were the Seven-Eleven, Tommy's, and then the supermarket. Now, in this zone, which is E1, I looked at all the allowable uses, which is, this is like the broadest old car lot. You're allowed multi-story residential, fruit stores, drug stores, liquor stores, clothing stores, jewelry stores, any kind of retail space there. Bookstores, gift shops, sporting goods, bike stores, antiques, hardware, auto accessory, boating and fishing, internet cafes, repair service, which includes water. Then you have other office uses, banks and insurance, real estate, stockbrokers, then you have services, laundromat, photo studio, barber shops, hair salons, tailors, yoga, spa, dog grooming, ad agencies, credit recording, a UPS store slash Tinko's, news media outlets, employment services, maintenance services, free more management consulting, schools of professional offices, and I can't think of any particular use of this list that isn't going to generate some kind of parking demand. And some of them are going to be higher, some are going to be lower. For example, if you were to open up a TV repair service in this property, I think that the person's going to want to drive there and park and carry their TV on, if they're to carry it, if it's from, you know, Robson or wherever they're coming from, if anyone ever repaired a TV anymore. But, you know, I think that there's just too much weight being placed on the parking demand for this use because I think a lot of the people that are going to go here are already available. Nobody's driving here from Long Grange to go eat a sandwich, to where a counter leaves. And as well as the office use upstairs, it's not an office use that's generating trips for the public. This is an office for the building owner. So it's his office, so he's working in a restaurant and it's his office. He's not opening up a realtor upstairs where people are going to come in and see property listings. It's his. He's the only guy using it. So, you know, the fact that there's a table on a balcony, to me, doesn't really mean anything because I have a table on my deck at home, but that doesn't mean that, you know, I'm generating more people living in my house because I have a table. So I think this is probably the best use of this property because of the constraints that come with it.
And Mark, can I, can I ask you a question? Is this going to be a good takeout place or would it be a horrible takeout place?
You mean the quality?
The quality of food.
I hope it's fabulous.
I hope it's fabulous too. And if you don't think people will travel to Seabright to go get fabulous food, you're wrong. I mean, we see it all the time. People come here, as Mr. Seo said, and Jellicoe's has no parking and they are one of the most popular Italian restaurants in New Jersey.
It's hard to compare.
I'm not comparing, I'm not comparing the two, but what I'm viewing, Mr. Ferenc Paul, is what was just testified to was no one else is going to go to this place unless they want.
That's this engineer's opinion, that sandwich, that a sandwich shop is not going to generate people from coming in other towns and passing several other, the stand, the sandwich shop.
And it's my, and I'm telling you that it's a good sandwich shop, which hopefully it will be, and there are plenty of good sandwich shops all around the area where people do travel to and because of the product and the quality of the product. So just to say, no one's going to come here because it's a sandwich shop, it's just factually correct. If it's a good product, they will come.
It's only thirty-minute parking in front of this building. People can't stay there anywhere. So people, you know, the traffic and spaces are going to be changing over time. And this is only in the summer where this is tragic, it's two or three months a year. The rest of the year, you don't have a problem with parking.
Can I say something? Uh, no, Seabright is three miles long. We live all the way at the very end of Seabright. I do not walk into town. If I want to get something in town, I drive into town. And most of my neighbors do. People from the other end of town, very few of them, you know, with all the multiple housing going up at the other end of town, the north end, people don't walk into Seabright. The only people who, what you're talking about are local people who live by, right downtown people. Most of us in Seabright live a good distance from the downtown. So we're not walking there. We're going to have to park our car, go get our sandwich, get back in our car. And the other thing is Lucky Dog also has their own parking. Therefore, spaces in back of their store, you miss that.
I mean, what I would say to you, the perfect example is a restaurant that's in Seaguard Fins. Like, there are people that come from Belmar, from South Belmar, from Madison Square, from Spring Lake, from Silicon Valley. They all come because of this particular sandwich shop to come get the sandwich and leave. So I agree that just because it's a sandwich shop doesn't necessarily equal it's only walk-up traffic. You know, like, for example, Fins has a restaurant in Point Beach. I live in Tom River. I drive from Tom River to Point Borough to get a sandwich from Fins. So I agree with you that just because it's a sandwich shop doesn't equal no traffic. Because if it's a good sandwich shop, then people will travel.
We're such a long town.
Yeah. You're long and narrow, so yes.
Right, vertical.
I, I think we would have to agree, though, that the mass majority of people going to these shops are people who are going to the beach and in town.
I would agree. I would understand your opinion.
That's your, your.
Let me just finish with, the demographics of our town, I live in South End, I walk into town, but the mass majority of our people are people who are coming to the center of town, which is what this kind of shop is going to service.
I, I don't disagree.
I walk because I know I'm not going to get a spot to park and I accept that. And if you don't accept that, then you don't go to the shop. You'll go and it's not busy. I, I, you know, our master plan says we're supposed to encourage businesses downtown. The way you're talking here sounds like, no, no, no. Let's finish your testimony.
I just want to add one thing, though. To, to reject the idea of having a sandwich shop on this property, which is in dire need of some sort of redevelopment, okay, based on parking, just seems arbitrary to me because of this entire list of every permitted use in this zone, you can't reasonably pick one of these uses that isn't going to generate parking demand. And I know you said there'll be one that's less. The only thing that could be less would be like, just an accountant sitting in an office who doesn't get any clients whatsoever, and you're just typing away at the computer and there's no customer involved whatsoever and you just have storefront. But that's not, that's not what is, that's not what the market's asking for. The market's not looking for insurance offices and TV repair stores and antique shops. Nobody's opening up a bookstore. The market is food. Everywhere I go, every town, and we do work in similar towns like South River and Milltown, Michigan, Free Old Borough, Madelon, Point Pleasant Beach, Long Grange, these are all places that have like a downtown area. Nobody's opening up a clothing store or a jewelry shop. It's all food everywhere you go. So unless you want a vacant store, probably after six months, the best use here is food. It's a pickup use. You go in, you stand and carry, take your sandwich and leave. Maybe you ride your bike there if you don't walk, okay? But I think that anything on this entire list of permitted use in this zone is going to generate some kind of a parking demand. And there's just no feasible way to provide parking?
May I ask a question? Russian nine, I think the statement was made that it's going to be a seasonal, like kind of seasonal. Take our shot.
We didn't say that.
Okay, that enough. Okay. No, no, no.
Sorry.
So I was going to say, it was seasonal, thinking about upstairs office space connected to that, the seasonality of the shop, is that the best use of the stairs? That was just a thought I had.
It's his office.
Yeah.
He works there, you know, so.
What we could do also, we can ask for a restriction on the fact that they would never, they would be forbidden from never renting that space upstairs. It's only for the use of the owner of the building.
I, I think you actually have to pass through the restaurant to get to that office. It's not like it has its own entry. So I don't know who would want to rent that if everybody has to walk through the restaurant.
I do, I'm just going to say this, Mark. I'm sorry, it's the seat there. Funnel Road, not a food establishment, just opened in Seabright, I think, two years ago, three years ago, soon a success.
Which one?
Funnel Road.
No off-street park?
No, I agree with you. No, I agree with you. But my point of the map, you make my point. It's a very successful restaurant. It is not food. I mean, it's a very successful retail store, and it's not food. And you're making my point.
We have, we have a ordinance, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a ordinance that allows if that tenant were to change from a clothing store to a food store, it's permitted use in this zone. They don't have to come in for any more applications.
Then the variance would-
Then the variance, yeah. It's a step up, and then the box of the business. The order-
But it's a similar business. It doesn't need-
Correct. They don't- They don't serve that way, but they're like, right, and say, yes, you're done. But we have, like, a class system, if I recall correctly, as far as we learn.
So I would just ask, Mr. Lever, can you put plan testimony on record to substantiate the variance, other than every use requires parking, and therefore, like, this is a C2 variance, so can you put deposit net your criteria on record?
Yes. So I looked at the borough's, actually, their master plan, and there were two sections. One is the vision statement. Just to reiterate, it says, vision statement describes Seabright's values and aspirations, and paints a picture of what the borough should become. It helps to inform the development of goals and objectives, and serves as a point of reference to state the course in achieving them as changes of parking. This is from 2017. So there's a couple of goal points there. Two of them I highlighted, which is to have an attractive, vibrant business district that draws residents and visitors alike to shop, eat, drink, and enjoy the area. And the next one, number three in the list, was be walkable and promote the free flow of onto traffic included bicycles. Now, because, in my opinion, the use of this property, which is presently of life, I think supports these two visions, I think that that's significantly positive. And some of the positives of the application, which we've discussed in the last hearing, were that, one, we were settling all our issues with our neighbor, which is very important, because we certainly don't want the neighbor objecting to what's proposed. That puts the board in a funny position, you know, to have to decide that when you have an objector. The next one is flood compliance. We are going to be one of the few buildings on Ocean Avenue that will be raised to comply with the, you know, state requirements for the flood hazard. It's going to be a new, modern building, which is compatible with this block. We have scaled this back. If you recall, there was an original submission that actually had an apartment included in the application. That was deleted from the plan. There was a third floor that was taken out. But again, looking at the negatives of the property, so obviously, we'll have to reiterate the negatives that are not meeting the parking requirements.
Are there other properties in the area of this subject property that also do not meet the parking requirements?
Yeah, I looked along this course Ocean Avenue, I agree, aerial photography, and there's two things that stand out when I look at those pictures. One is that none of those buildings have any off-street parking. Two is that none of those buildings are in compliance with either building coverage or lot coverage. And to be honest-
Can we just, can we just finish this?
Well, I don't have any comment, I think.
Can you just finish this testimony before you ask me questions?
I'm just asking the question, how many of those buildings that you just reviewed said that none of them have the requirements? How many of them are new buildings?
Very few.
Thank you.
But is, you know, is the fact that this is a new building, you know, and you're starting with, is your front setback requirement, is your side setback requirement, 15-foot rear setback requirement? Even if we comply with the 15-foot rear setback requirement, it doesn't make the variance for parking disappear, it doesn't change anything, other than limit the use of this property by the application itself. So I don't think that, you know, having this building with a variance for both building coverage and lot coverage is a huge detriment to the borough, because it's exactly the way it is on the block.
In your opinion, is there a positive reason for granting the variance and no substantial negative impact?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, we're proposing permitted use, okay, which instead of an impact, that's a benefit, because we're doing something with a property that's underutilized and has severe limitations going back to, you know, this property's 15 feet wide.
Do you think that that meets the hardship under the C1 criteria?
Well, let's, let's take a step back. No, it's not you said-
Wait a second, wait a second. Board attorney, excuse me. Board attorney, I'm going to ask you to make a rule here, okay? That she's the planner for the board. She's not the-
And she's currently doing the statement that you just placed on-
Did you sell, did you ask, did you send out buy cell letters?
Excuse me. She's making, in effect, an objection. He hasn't answered the question. If she wants to rebut it, that's fine. My point is-
I take the objection as to what you will say.
So now we're at C1, and the whole time you've been at C2. You didn't send out buy cell letters to qualify it under hardship, so I would stick to C2.
Okay. So we'll, C2, minimum lots, okay? So obviously, we said it's an infill project. The lot's 15 feet wide. And a 15-foot-wide lot in this zone does come with a lot of difficulties and limitations for development. So the first one is a lot area. We need 3,000 square feet. We have 1,076. We have a minimum lot width requirement of 50 feet. We're only 15 feet to work with. And I stated before, the 15-foot rear setback, which, by the way, there's no rear setback presently, but again, that building's being demolished. You know, it's difficult to comply with, because we have to provide a space that's usable for whatever tenant is in there. Now, there's also a building coverage limitation of 50%. If you were to apply 50% building coverage to this property, the maximum size building you could have is 538 square feet, which is probably smaller than this room. So, you know, again, I think there is a balancing act between what is the practicality of building something on this lot without zoning it into any utility and saying, you know, if this thing is useless, you can't put a structure here without granting some relief. And on the other hand, if you grant that relief, it's really creating a detriment in any way, shape, or form. We already know we can't put parking, okay? So now the answer is, do you want a business here, and whether it's a sandwich shop or anything else on this list of permitted uses, okay? Because right now, there's nothing there, and I think that the major detriment is leaving it the way it is. So I don't think that what they're asking for is impractical. I understand you have certain issues with the details of the application, which is fine, and we're trying to address some details the best we can. But again, I think that the lot comes with some very serious constraints. We've worked on this for many, many years. It's been a difficult lot to develop. And I just think that, you know, granting a relief would only serve as a positive to the area.
Is there a goal of zoning that you're advancing?
Sure. So there's, in the statement of policies and the master plan, there's-
No, no, not the master plan.
Oh.
And now you are a goal of zoning under section two.
There are three. These are the goals. To encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use or development of all land in the borough in a manner that will promote public health, safety, and rules in general about progress, number one. Number two is to secure safety from fire, flood, and other natural and man-made disasters, specifically including the protection of lighting property from coastal storms and flooding. And the third one is to provide adequate light air and open space. Now, the first one is to guide appropriate use and development. I think that this property, being that it's in a business zone and the use is appropriate for the area, is consistent with what's available as someone that would be walking into Seabright. So I think we're consistent with that. We're asking for a use variance. I wouldn't have much of a discussion here today. To secure from fire, floods, coastal storms, I think we already discussed that we're elevating this building so that that is no longer an issue. And then adequate light air and open space. We did reduce the size of the building, including the height of this building, and the multitude of uses in the building to provide more light air and open space. I'm sorry, we can't give you 15 feet in the back of the building in the alley, but honestly, I don't think that that 15 feet does anything for anybody, other than limit the available usability of what could be inside the structure. So I think that we are forwarding those purposes of zoning, and again, I feel that being a central business district, which contains most of the borough's retail restaurant uses, you know, we fit right in. Basically, and I'm just quoting from your master plan, this district encompasses that 3.4% of the borough's total land area, which is not a lot. But I think you have to do a lot with something that's not a lot, and I think it's, it's fine.
Any board members have any further questions?
No questions to this testimony.
Okay, we'll open it to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would have a question about this testimony we just listened to? All right, we'll close that portion of it. Mr. Fontana, you have anything else?
I have one more witness, other than the property owner.
There's one thing I would like you to bring up. I saw you had a rendering of what the streetscape is going to look like.
Yes.
I think that's kind of important. But we have to point out that the building to the right now is going to be four stories.
Wait a second. Can we swear here, please?
Yeah.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for purposes of this application?
I do.
Thank you. Can you please state your name and your credentials for the record or your affiliation?
Joseph Fontana, the owner, and I plan to be the user of the establishment.
Thank you, Mr. Fontana.
So we should, we should have this, Mark.
So for purposes of identification, that is a rendering?
Yes.
And was the rendering created by Mr. Fontana or by your architect?
Your architect.
Okay. Mr. Fontana, are you familiar with the exhibit that Mr. Corticold is holding in front of you?
Yes, I'm aware of that, although-
Okay, so we're going to mark this as a A1. What is it, on the A1, any prior exhibits?
No, I think you used everything that was on-
Okay. No, it was on here, but, okay. So we're going to mark this as exhibit A1 and note it as a rendering.
Thank you.
Yeah, why don't we put it up here?
No, it's a chair. It's on the chair floor. It's not a chair.
That's it, we got it.
Well, it's on the wall.
It's a bathroom. Can you describe what is depicted in A1, please, if you want to go up?
A two-story, floor floor.
Just make sure you turn it up to the side.
I've got my architecture deadly, addressing all concerns, which was with handicap accessible. A little paw crunch there, and that's obviously to get up to the first floor establishment. Like he said, he needed at least six feet there. For one wheelchair to come and have to back out and make a turn, so that type of use is definitely for people to gather. It's more of an in-and-out, too busy, too small. And it's the same small balcony off my office upstairs. My attention is the same seven years later now as it was the day I remember coming before you bought, saying, I'm retired, bored of my skull, and I am going to be the owner and operator of this establishment. And I'm still waiting seven years later to accomplish that same goal. We reduced the third story. Anything it took to accommodate is, or just begin to the next one. Seven years of real long time to really- I come down every season on the beach, and it's a little over, it's a one day.
So what do you plan to use the second story?
Sandwich floor. Sandwich shop downstairs. The storage in the rear with the doors that go in, that's more for garbage, because we didn't want garbage outside, it matters. So there's no use down below, and that would get washed out if there was any other stuff. So that's why the storage is really upstairs. Taking into consideration that I'm only 13-foot clearance, they have to be able to block wall on each side, really. So now we're alone. And then the office, that's it. So the office and storage rooms in the rear, plus I believe the mechanicals upstairs, on the second floor. So the second floor is being also used. That hands on mechanicals HVAC and water in the beverage.
And your architect had made certain concessions about removing tables and chairs. Do you agree with those concessions?
No.
So you would have no sit-down, patrons, or with the dining and the cameras you committed? You agree to those conditions?
Not even just a counter and a wall, just a whole thing. Somebody has to sit something down, unless it's just going to be a bare, open, square people go, front area, where would anybody, you know, get popped up? I'm just going to get your money or your credit card, or whatever the case may be. No tables and jets, that's fine.
The upstairs office will be used only for his personal use and not for rent?
Personally, myself.
And not for rental?
Not for rental, no. Can't be, you can't go to my establishment to get upstairs, and I'm the owner and operator of all.
No, you could modify things in the future. I would just want to have that restriction on it if we do approve it.
Like, you're not going to travel to the next summer, you're not going to be the owner of the premises.
I don't even go around saying, you know, it ain't rentable upstairs. I'm not looking for that. I'm not trying to blow it up. I'm trying to scale it down as much as I can to make things better.
So for carpetation, are we getting rid of the counter space or not getting rid of counter space? Because you asked him, Mr. Corticold, and I heard him saying, okay, I'll still have-
The table and chairs.
They said the test one was, you know, the table and chairs, and the counter was on the side, however, they were leaving the depth in to have the counter so that people could be in space.
So there's still going to be the wall counter.
But no sit-down?
No, no, no.
Yeah, but that's not on the plans, anyway. There's no sit-down inside.
Well, that's why you understand what does it mean in front of the town if they have chairs.
I think it's just-
So it'll be just no chair, no-
This is not, maybe six feet. Maybe six feet.
Other chairs, though.
This is, I just think, but-
So there were-
I understand. It makes sense. The answer to the question as to whether I would be here around the ocean, it would be on whether the area allowed it or not. If the business is there, and the people are happy and like it, why would I keep it open? I'm basically retired. So that's what I'm looking forward to doing.
I don't have any further questions. So the board may have questions, Mike.
You are aware, on the right side of you now, what we approved, or to be built next to you on the right-hand side?
Yes.
To the north side.
Oh, where's your-
Where the right side says, we have to-
I have no direction.
No, no, you know what they proposed, what we approved for that?
Yes, I have.
It's going to be a four-story building. This picture depicts three stories. That's actually going to be four or five, almost five stories, isn't it?
So the counter is up, this would be-
I believe that was just my rendered shot, guy just putting a building down.
No, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to help the board understand or look at is the proportion of the streetscape. I know Mark is interested in doing a one-story building here. You're going to have, it would be a three-story building on one side and a five-story building on the other side, and one story in the middle, it would look ridiculous. I think this contributes to the streetscape to look pretty or anything. I just wanted to get that into the board understood.
That's what the P2 rail was like. It's the smallest, and the sides are way up high. This is more.
All right, is there any, is there any further testimony?
No.
Does the board have any other questions to this testimony?
Do you plan on having the facade look as it is in the art of rendering?
Exactly.
Exactly as you are of rendering?
Correct.
Not the building.
Yeah. So blessed, if it was relevant, much, much impossible.
Will you be clear on that in the resolution if the board sees that? We've done that properly before.
It has to be as it is in the worst, in exhibit A1, but-
We've done this before.
Understood.
Mr. Fontana- I have a question for Rick.
Yeah, can that, the facade is to be, if it's approved, to be as it should in the rendering, okay?
Just to give a little clarity, before I sit on the earlier questions regarding why it took so long, the day I wrote that, I was going over the history of why-
Don't even go there. Don't even go. Not necessary.
Mr. Fontana, quick question. If you receive approval, what is the timing of your project?
What is that? As fast as I can possibly in the borough.
Sorry, you're prepared to go?
Immediately. You can start me working on the mechanical drawing if I get approval.
And the last meeting, you had said that if you had approval, he would, the model would be existing building immediately?
As long as I have approval.
It was actually the 60 feet.
The 60 feet, I said, that's-
Yes, and I might be very open to just leaving the machine that's out there already and hiring the jobbers who is hired just to make you more comfortable. He's found them, he's there, he already qualified it. That's as fast as you can go.
Well, you're mutual, then.
Yes, you got approval, I say, yeah.
No, obviously, you're fine already, of course. I understand that. But 60 feet is what you read last time, so to say that's the whole thing.
But see, that's his machines there. That would be the quickest path to why, I already got the number, the machine's there. I'm not looking to slow this process. Not that I think it'll happen this summer, because his mechanical drawings and things of that nature, he'll probably put a fence up across the front, white something to make it just a little bit for the summer months. And as he's working on the counters.
But the door will come down in 60?
Yeah, oh, yeah. I'll put up a white fence so you don't have to put that counter to say, you're empty.
Understood.
One comment is that the, they said that they would possibly put a door above the stairway on the south side. If that's the case, then the second floor has access to Bridge Street. Advantage.
But that sounded like it was necessary to qualify for the use of that staircase?
No, it was a combination to make the staircase go nowhere. Somewhere to nowhere.
They would make the door used for both-
Well, you can have someone, because the first floor is always being serviced for them. We just took the door from the left side and moved my back door.
So the staircase goes around to the third floor and the second floor?
Yes, we're talking about, Mr. Fontana, we're talking about this, the second story.
Yes.
So you're right.
But I also heard somebody earlier, I think that was the alley that leads to nowhere. So I'm like, is it a first?
I guess, the testimony is that you will be able to get to that second floor from outside, not just through the rest of it.
Right, if the door was added, yes.
Well, that has to be decided, and it has to be told to the board.
There's no more questions? We'll open it to the public. Anybody in the public has another question?
John Anderson, counsel for Mary and Christine Alcides. Hi, Mr. Fontana, how are you doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be very appreciative.
Just going to do a little cross-annoying.
I put a number of conditions on the record before I asked your architect about this one. We'll move you- to go over with you, and make sure that you're amenable to these conditions as conditions of approval, if the board is open to find or approve the application. The first would be the absence of any party walls. You'll construct your own wall, albeit at the property line, is that right?
Right.
Okay.
The plan showing.
Great. The roof leader, we talked about, the plan showing that being relocated to the northwesterly corner of your building, with a splash pad to satisfy Mr. Hoder's erosion statement, is that okay by you?
Yes.
You will do an in-swing garbage door under the building?
If I may, can we just have counsel stipulate, please, if you want to go through them again?
Yes.
I think we've done that, right?
I thought that was the purpose of the beginning.
I'm halfway through, so.
The major ones, we've done it already. I agree with counsel.
Yeah.
All right, did you hear all the conditions that I put on the record at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes.
And you're willing to abide all those conditions as conditions of approval, if you have approval, see?
Will do, will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson, I appreciate that.
Is there anybody else in the public that has a question for this testimony? If not, we'll close the public portion. Do you have any further statements, or?
We have no further witnesses or evidence. I may just be able to make a brief closing statement by my counsel, thank you. So, we have a building here, in fact, that's been deemed an unsafe structure, it's literally was declared by the city several years ago. The real benefit is to remove this structure and to replace it with a building. You've heard the testimony from the architect, from the engineer, from the owner, which quite frankly was very straightforward and compelling, the building isn't oversized. It is something that will benefit the town, the residents, the patrons that come to your side, to your town, particularly in each area, there is no negative. You pointed out, Mr. Chairman, that 80% of your commercial buildings don't have parking, that's a factor that should be considered. The engineer is also a licensed planner, gave the basis for why we meet the C2 criteria before we ask that you grant the application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on the board?
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a motion to deny the application.
Can we discuss it first?
Yeah, I made my motion, I'm starting the motion. I would make a motion to deny the application, I think they're asking for too intensive a use for this site. They don't need a restaurant, they'd be coming for something that's less intense. I reject the idea that a non-food business can't survive in C-Right. We have an art gallery that just opened up very recently, which is being very successful. We have, we have this big, I forget what I just, I forget the name of it at the moment, I said it a few moments ago.
Bungalow.
Bungalow Road has been very, very successful. The master plan is home for a diversity of things to be put into our downtown, not, we don't want to become the food net of the world, where all we have is food establishments, that's not very forward-thinking, and I just reject that that's the only thing that can possibly work in today's society. I would like to see a variety of things come into town, and I understand it's permitted use, but it comes with the variances, they could do something much intensive, don't need a second floor, it's just, it's too much for the site. And again, I believe it's, I believe the self-fated hardship, you need enough parking when you bought it, and you shouldn't be choosing to do this now. So, like I said, I'd make a motion to deny the application.
Okay, since we're going to have a little bit of a sharing, I respect, I'll do the same thing. I think the property has some very unique challenges that have to be dealt with. I think the town's better off with the property after the fact than where we are right now. I believe it eliminates an ISO that we've often been looking at for way too long. I understand the parking issue, but I think the unique challenges that we have here, it's hard to do anything different. If the building was shorter, I don't believe parking would be viable, because I don't think you could sit in the back even if you wanted to. I do believe the vast majority of people who service this restaurant will be walk-ups. I live in the town year-round, I know what happens here, so I'm familiar with that. I think the team has done an excellent job of working with an excellent neighbor to work out their differences, actually quite collegial, I'm impressed by how they work those issues out. And I think that the thing that's important to me is we need to ensure that deliveries are done off Ocean Avenue, because that's a challenge for us, and if we can accomplish that, I'm strongly in favor.
Did they agree to that stipulation?
Yes.
Yes, we agreed to that stipulation.
So do we know voting on it now?
Counsel, I didn't.
Do you know voting on it now?
Yes, yes.
And the only thing, and I keep hearing, and earlier this point up again, I am not suggesting that they have on-site parking. I'm not suggesting that. So I want to be very, I'm not pushing that issue.
Gentlemen, okay, first of all, we have a motion pending, it's a motion to deny, so let's.
Mark, I just want to clarify, because there seems to be a misperception, I heard it from Mr. Lieber also, and now I'm hearing it from the council here. I am not suggesting on-site parking, I cannot be more clear on that. The fact of the matter is, they are proposing a use that generates six parking spaces that this town does not have to give them. So no, not on-site, off-site, and we can't be planning, and we can't be planning this only based upon what exists today. We are dealing with a situation based upon easements done in 1960s, and we're suffering from the ramifications of that, we have to be forward-thinking. So that's why I'm suggesting that we do here.
So, so Mr.?
Mark, if you may respond to that, first of all, perception matters, and perception of people, including myself, when you push every possible way on this parking thing on-site, and every time something came up, we look for a new angle to get back to it.
No, you're mistaken, and that's not.
Can I finish? I respected your time.
Yes, sir, please do.
Okay. You were vehemently against it because of the parking issue, you brought it up at the last meeting, you brought it up at this meeting, and I think it's now, I'm entitled to my opinion, so we just both had our say, we'll leave it to other people now.
Now, again, I just, F. S. I. can go on, did you understand that I'm not in no way suggesting parking on-site?
That's not.
What? Because I am not suggesting parking on-site.
That certainly wasn't clear this time.
Well, it should be clear now, because I said it about five times.
Now, can I do that thing? Okay, so I believe Mr. Lexte has a motion on the floor to deny based on the, can we finish?
I'd like to have a discussion before we.
I, I, well, there's a motion on the floor, so.
Well, after we have a discussion, we'll continue on that. I'd like the people to discuss it, and get it off the.
I don't think you disagree with me.
I wasn't disagreeing with you.
No, I think, I think it's a great application, I think it's a nice-looking building, and it's modest compared to the one that was approved next to it, it's modest compared to the existing hardware, structure, and apartments, it's a minimal impact on parking, and I just think it's a great application, and if we don't approve this, what do we approve?
This is, you know, Mr. Fontana, we had a bad taste in our mouths because of all the years, but now that you realize what his struggle was, and I think it's commendable that he made an agreement with the property next door, because you're in construction, you know zero-lot construction, you shouldn't have any windows on that side of the building. That's the way zero-lot construction is, you don't have to have a window. And the fact that they're accommodating the existing windows that are in that building, I think that's commendable. I think the lot is so narrow, it totally falls under the hardship condition, I mean, I think they're doing a great job with so little doorways, and I think it looks good, I think, I think it's a good application, I'd be in favor.
Ken. Yeah, I'd like to say simply, too, I think it's a beautiful building, it's very attractive, I like the way it fits in, and I like the way they worked with their neighbors. However, I will never go there, I will never buy a sandwich from them, because I would have to drive, I would even have to double park to run in and get my sandwiches. I think that the parking issue is very important. I'm not going to park across the street, go again, go down to the corner, go across, and go in just to get a sandwich, I will never go there. And I know a lot of my neighbors will never go there, unless they're at the beach, but we have our own beach, across from our house, so we never go downtown.
But that's his story.
But the fact, the fact you wouldn't go there doesn't mean it's without.
And I know a lot of people, I know, I don't think, I think the parking issue is very important.
All parking problems in this town didn't come because we've overbuilt the downtown, it's become, the fact that New York, New York realizes that we have a fantastic beach, and they all want to come here.
We have overbuilt, we know we have overbuilt.
The parking, the parking.
I lived in 30 years, the town, when I first moved here, you could park anywhere, you didn't have all these problems.
You do.
Now, it's impossible to park there.
But it's not the fault of.
Just why is it?
The thing is though, because we keep granting these ridiculous parking variances, we gave them ridiculous parking variances, and I regret it, to Tommy's, we gave them, nobody knew what Tommy's was going to become, we gave them a huge parking variance. And you know, that's our fault, and we, and by keep, and that's what, that's what Elizabeth Freud is, I believe, is that we keep doing this, and it needs to stop, because we have no parking, and there's no future place to put parking.
We have to take into consideration the size of this lot, and we want something on it, and I think the engineer made some very good points. Almost any other business that you could put here would require driving. 90% of the people who are going to walk into this place are walkers, because they're coming from this beach. That's a fact. And if 50 of our residents don't want to walk from North Beach to South Beach, that's fine, and if you want to do it during the off-season when there's plenty of parking, that's fine, but the majority of people that are going there are going to be people who are already in town and are going to be walking in, just like all the other residents.
I agree with you.
We had the Italian ice place down there, great engineers, you know, there are plenty of businesses that are downtown.
Well, if there's no further discussion.
I mean, my, my thought is, it's a beautiful building, it does a great job from what's there. My God, I wish it were five years ago, because, you know, we walk by it every single day. It's another food restaurant, and I understand the engineer, I agree, he made a great case, and it's, it's going to be just another food restaurant, which is challenging, but, you know, I wish it were potentially something else, because I think we could handle that as well. The parking issue is, is a super challenge, it's always going to be there, I wouldn't want to see nothing done because of the lax parking that we have, but it is such a narrow lot, if it were another Tommy's or another Matt's, it was a totally different story. I would like, though, to, if we are approving this, to put in the condition that it is being, the business is being considered as a restaurant. So if it does become something else, then that has another review, isn't that correct?
As a takeout restaurant.
Yeah, as a takeout restaurant, right?
Any change of use would require a change of parking requirements, and we'll have to come back to the board.
Yeah.
That's good. And then we just give the name.
The bar. Mark, you didn't like this application from the first time you came here years ago. You must have thought it was a good idea, you're more to the good side, if you're not.
Let's just, is that no more further discussion?
I just want to, I just want to clarify one thing, you do not, in your ordinance, differentiate between takeout restaurants and sit-down restaurants.
Yeah, okay.
So if you characterize this as a restaurant with zero parking, should the sandwich shop go out, another restaurant with tables and chairs can go in there as a restaurant to restaurant?
No, I think they were searching to be in this capable.
Respectfully? No. This, you're approving a restaurant with zero parking. There is no differentiation in your ordinance between takeout or sit-down, there is none.
There are conditions in your book.
Can we go that condition in here?
I'm just, I just want to clarify for the record, that if it's a restaurant, which is there's no differentiation in your ordinance, you're approving zero parking spaces for a restaurant.
But you would like, but from what I'm hearing, the board would like an exclusion in the resolution that if it.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
If it became a sit-down restaurant, then the issue would have to be revisited.
That's why I'm bringing it up, because just ordinance to ordinance, there's no differentiation.
Jen, can I ask a question? Suppose it became something completely different than a restaurant, hardware store, a liquor store?
They would have to come back, because they don't have parking, yeah.
So it's restaurant, takeout, or sit-in, either one, that's all they'd be able to do without coming back?
Well, I think what, what is being suggested is that the condition is that if it goes to something other than takeout, they would have to come back.
Yeah.
Before that clause, my question to you was, like mine service?
Correct.
Otherwise, it has to come back for review.
Correct, because it wouldn't make the parking a crime.
Thank you very much. Okay, if we're finished with the discussion, we have a motion on the, on the table from Mr. Lexte.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Wait, wait, wait. Proceed, really, we're going to the front door. Does Mr. Lexte have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion with a primary and a secondary, is there a role called vote? Now, sector, please. And keep in mind, if you are voting yes, you are voting to deny, if you vote no, you are voting against a denial, and then we would move to a secondary motion. Counsel, heather?
No.
Mr. Cashmore?
No.
First chairman, the cell?
No.
Ms. Warman?
No.
Mr. Lexte?
Yes.
Mr. Julia?
Yes.
So that motion does not carry, I mean, motion. Yeah, so we have a little fealty in the negative order. So, do we have another motion that someone would like to make with regard to this application?
I'd like to make that motion to approve if the conditions agree.
We have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Should I say yes or no?
Now we go yes to approve, no to deny. Okay. Counsel, heather?
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore?
Yes.
First chairman, the cell?
Yes.
Ms. Warman?